You're live, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. I will call to order the Northborough Board of Selectmen meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven P M. I've got some opening announcements. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consisted consistent with the July sixteen, two thousand twenty-two act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless per unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comment. Now we'll make sure everyone can hear and be heard. I'll go around the virtual room. Let's see, Scott Rogers.
Present.
Kristen Wickstead.
Here.
Jason Pro.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Also with us this evening is Town Administrator John Kader.
Present.
Fire Chief Dave Parenti also handling the Zoom stuff.
Present.
D P W Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
Last but certainly not least Assistant Town Administrator Beckham Echens.
Present.
Excellent. That out of the way, let's get started. First item on our agenda as always is public input. If there's anyone who wishes to provide any input to the board, please raise your virtual hand. I see one thus far. Let's see, first we'll go with Laura. I'm going to allow you to talk. Laura, if you could unmute yourself and identify yourself, please.
Hi, it's Laura Zaitin from Seventeen Franklin Circle. Can you hear me?
We hear you. What's on your mind?
Awesome. I just wanted to call over the weekend. I had a chance to visit one thirty-five. And I saw some beautiful benches commemorating some folks in our town, and I just wanted to thank D P W Director Scott Sharpentier. I wanted to thank the selectmen. I was really happy to see the bench for for Polymer is there with a beautiful, you know, memento to her. I saw Bucky's bench was there, and I was especially thankful to be able to talk to my kids about the importance of the people that have made these different parts of our town available. So I just wanted to acknowledge it. Thank you, guys. And I appreciate it. But that's all. I hope you have a good night.
Thank you very much, Laura. I will add that I received a couple of emails, including one from a family member of Paula, also asking or thanking us for for getting a bench back up. So my understanding is D P W Director Scott Sharpentier orchestrated that. I appreciate a really good resolution to that issue. Next, we have Anne Marie, Anne Marie Rizuru. Anne Marie, if you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Hey, good afternoon. Good evening. Sorry, time is already much later than I thought. My name is Anne Marie Rajguru. I've been a resident for over fifteen years in town. Um, and in in terms of that, I I love the earlier comments, one thirty-five. Um, so love that the town of Norboro has these awesome pickleball courts, and so I have a question. Um, and that's around a process about because the investment is awesome and amazing and really enjoyed using it. Um, but what's the process to explore when the courts can be open? And again, I wanted to be, you know, want to make sure it's a constructive process so that we can address and understand all matters that that are needed to make sure that there's a win-win. The investment made uh, needs to be honored and and respected, and and we're very grateful for it. We also want to make sure that the investment is is used as as intended for the residents. Um, and in line with right, the master plan recreational goals is to maintain and expand opportunities for active recreation for all residents, all ages and abilities, and and definitely that facility um, is intended, and we want to be able to use it. And currently, there is no ability for Norboro residents to play outside. So the question is really, what's the process to evaluate?
Sure. Pickleball has obviously been very, very popular in town since we added the courts. Um, I, there have been some some requests and questions about closing it during the winter, which is primarily done to preserve the the facility uh, without deterioration. My suggestion, I don't know if anyone would have anything additional or different, is to contact either the Recreation Director Ellie Lane or the Recreation Commission uh, who oversee those those courts. I don't know if, John, if you had anything additional to suggest?
No, just, you know, as you know, the manufacturer recommended that we close them for the winter to preserve the surface. There's also some liability concerns, but uh, I think the appropriate body would be the Rec Commission to to take that up.
Okay, yep, and I I respect and I respect the investment and want to make sure that as as residents, um, you know, we understand the process and protocol um, to have both the benefits and and address any of the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We did not get her address.
Okay. Uh, that's true. If you are still listening, Anne Marie, if you could send us an email with your address for just for our records would be uh, would be helpful. Uh, next up, we have Scott Mahoney. Scott, I'm bringing you in. Scott, if you could identify yourself, including your address, and tell us what's on your mind.
Uh, Scott Mahoney, nine Assabet Hill Circle. I've lived at this address for thirty-eight years, and there is a sidewalk that connects Westbrook Road to um Cedar Hill Road. No, Crestwood, I'm sorry. Um, I checked all the registered deeds records. There is a twenty-five-foot easement with that sidewalk. Um, and it was first registered in nineteen eighty. Um, everybody in this neighborhood uses that sidewalk. Uh, the new landowner has decided that he doesn't want people using that sidewalk. Um, and I'd asked D P W if they're willing to keep that sidewalk clear. There is a tree down on the sidewalk, and the landowner has refused to remove it. I was wondering if D P W would be willing to do that.
What I'd suggest, I haven't, Scott, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, I I'm not familiar with the issue. If the D P W Director would like to respond to it now, that's fine. Otherwise, I'd suggest emailing the board and and the D P W Director to with with some of those details, but Scott, I saw your hand up.
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, so the walkway the residents referring to is actually located within a utility easement, so the land is privately owned. The the landowner, their deed grants the town an easement for underground utilities. There is no easement for public's uh, walkways, so D P W does not maintain that.
I understand that, except the walkway has been there for forty years. Um, and there's a fire hydrant at one end of the walkway. I'm sure that if D P W went in there and said, we're clearing it in case there's a fire, there would be no issue. I know he's talked to you, Scott, about removing all those dead trees. He told me he talked to you about it or one of your staff.
Okay, I don't, I I apologize, Mr. Mahoney. I don't want to get into a back and forth during the public input part of the meeting. You certainly, yeah, yeah, certainly, that's all right. You certainly opened up the discussion and dialogue on this. Um, again, my suggestion, if you'd like the board to get involved or try to help you with this, is send an email, but um, based on what the D P W Director has said about it being an underground easement and not a sidewalk easement. There's not a lot that we can do from my for at least from my my awareness. I wish we could help more, but I don't know if we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one more hand up from Rob E. Robbie, I'm bringing you in. If you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and state your address, please.
Yeah, I'm Robert Edgewell, so I live at one seventy-three South Street, and I have some more comments about the pickleball courts staying locked up. I don't know if this is the time to mention some things or at the end of your meeting.
Um, you 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 can provide input anytime you'd like, before or after. Um, we have exchanged some emails and probably the only thing that I could respond now is the same that I spoke to to the earlier commenter that the Recreation Commission is going to be the best avenue for you to to get some of the questions addressed about opening the pickleball courts during the winter months.
Okay, I sent two letters to the board. One on January the sixth, and then a response to a response from the the town on January thirteenth. And I wanted all the board members to read it because I think it has some good reasons to keep the pickleball courts open and addressing some of the concerns. Uh, I'm wondering if everybody had a chance to read it?
I I can't speak for everyone, but we all, I know we all received it. I believe that we are all very good and very thorough about reading the emails that come in. So I I would guess we all did, but the Recreation Commission has primary jurisdiction over that, so um, there's not a lot that I anticipate the board will do.
It seems like we have a different opinion of 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 the dangers of damage to the pickleball courts and the deterioration. Uh, we contacted some pickleball companies about those things.
I apologize. We don't want to have dialogues. You you have.
Okay, one other question, one other question. Disagreement or difference of opinion? And we already been told no. Is there a process to appeal to the to the select boards?
If the
the final decision?
If you go to the Recreation Commission and they make a decision that you disagree with, you can write to the Board of Selectmen and we
They have made a decision. They have made a decision in the first response. I have not heard back, but the second response, I believe, will be still to keep the nets closed, closed for their reasons. So I'd like to take it up with.
So my 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 suggestion, Rob, is send us a note with referencing the Recreation Commission's decision and and then then
You have the first decision, do you not?
I am not aware of a Recreation Commission decision. I I have seen the emails back and forth between yourself and the Town Administrator. Um, but that's, I I'm not aware of a vote from the Recreation Commission on this.
I'm not familiar with the Recreation Commission. Is that the response from for from those who sent the first response?
Recreation Commission is a committee similar to the Board of Selectmen in that it's a a group of residents that make up a committee that meets in public and votes on issues relative to recreation properties. So they're the right people to talk to about this. If you look on the town website, under Boards and Committees, you'll see a Recreation Commission page there that will have their contact information.
So those others were was not sent to them, the ones I I wrote?
I I have I have no idea. I I don't know the answer to that. You sent something to the Board of Selectmen, so I responded to it.
Okay, one other question. Uh, I guess I can call the number and find out how to do that.
Sure.
I can call your town number. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much, Rob. Okay, I see one more hand up. We haven't had this much interest in quite a while. It's very exciting. Lisa Muselli, I'm bringing you in. Lisa, identify yourself and say what's on your mind.
Good evening, Lisa Muselli, thirteen Maple Street. I actually was just gonna watch, but then I I heard a question, and I think I need to ask a follow-up question. Um, in reference to probably two questions, referring to that sidewalk that's by Assabet Park. Is that sidewalk a private sidewalk? Is it something that the owner put in, or is it a, is it was something that was built when the road was put in? That's the first question.
Does anyone know the answer? I don't think anyone here was here forty years ago, if in fact it was put in forty years ago.
All right, so I guess we'd have to find, because I have a sidewalk in front of my house, and if I, in the wintertime, didn't want to take on the liability and had some problems, that means that I could close my sidewalk down too, doesn't it?
My suspicion is the sidewalk in front of your house is along a road and is within the public right of way and is a regular sidewalk. Uh, I think it's a different situation than the other caller had.
All right, it's not, it's not on the road then. His isn't on the road.
Mr. Chairman, this this walkway is between two of public roadways, and it's goes across pub- of of private land. So it's it's not along a roadside.
Okay, great. I was just wondering, because I have a, I have a hump on mine. It does get a little dangerous. I didn't know if I was gonna have to put a rail on it or not when this ice comes. Because it does get a little dangerous, but um, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up, so this ends our initial public comment portion of the evening. Next up, approval of meeting minutes for January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Would anyone like to make a motion or otherwise discuss those items?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve the meeting minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, please, aye aye. Uh, let's see, Julianne.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Kristen.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Next up, we have D P W Director Scott Sharpentier on approval and execution of Newton Street Drainage Easements. Uh, take it away, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's a memorandum that's been provided to the board as part of your packet. It's from the Town Engineer. It's dated January seventeenth. The um, uh, there's a land developer up on Newton Street. This is past the the two Sherolands. Um, they did quite a few residential subdivisions up there with with single-family homes. As part of the planning board approval that they issued back in two thousand fourteen, the the con- the builder, the developer had to replace a culvert at the low spot on Newton Street. Um, they replaced the culvert. They installed a new head wall. As one of the conditions of that approval was the conveyance of an easement, a maintenance easement. Uh, so in your packet, you'll see attached to the memorandum the language of the easement as well as the recordable easement plan. Um, the easement limits while they, it's an odd length. Um, it follows directly along the limit of work that was directly associated with a culvert replacement. Uh, the easement ha- uh, language and recordable plan has been reviewed by Town Council. They've they concur with it as does the Developers Council, and I believe the developer has already signed the easement. So the last action is for the board to to approve, which will allow the town to release the remainder of the the bond that the developer had to put up petition of their work.
Makes sense to me. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Scott Rogers.
Just a quick question from my understanding. On the map, Scott, the um the, is the roadway easement already granted, and we're just looking at the drainage easement?
Yes, yes, the roadway easement has been granted. The uh, the drainage easement is the last remaining easement needed.
Got you there. And then just one more question, and and I I got an answer earlier today, but for the benefit of the rest of the board members, um, there was a a series of improvements planned for Newton Street across several developers. And in and at one point in the past, um, this property was was somewhat dependent on or or dependent, dependent on or dependent of uh, another property, but my understanding is that that relationship and and connectedness is no longer an issue, and so this is a a pretty straightforward approval here on on this individual property.
That's correct. Often, there can be challenges when you have developments on either side of the road at different times and different conditions. Uh, but the planning board did work closely with the two developers as well as staff to come to an understanding of what each developer was responsible for, and both of their responsibilities have been met.
Excellent. Thank you for confirming that.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board or from staff? I take it, Scott, that by your your presentation, you're recommending the board approve this this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the Newton Street Drainage Easement as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Jason Perrow.
Aye.
Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote unanimous in favor. Drainage easement is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Sharpentier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Next up on our agenda is discussion and vote on town admin- on removal of Town Administrator residency requirement from the town charter. Mr. Kader, tell us a little bit about this if you could.
Sure. So this is something that I had mentioned to the board last year, uh, not in the throes of any sort of transition or anything. Uh, we actually had gotten a phone call from uh, from a uh, consultant who does probably about ninety percent of the executive recruitments for town administrators and town managers across the state. And he had called me and asked, uh, does Northborough have a residence require requirement for the Town Administrator? And I indicated yes. And then I asked him, well, tell me, you know, what what are you seeing out there? And of course, it's a very competitive market. There aren't a lot of folks, uh, you know, a lot of town administrator or town manager, uh, uh, applicants out there qualified. And essentially, what he said was he was working for a couple of towns at the moment that had a residence requirement that were in the process of getting rid of it because it significantly constrained their applicant pool. So uh, so I had just mentioned in passing, uh, that, you know, might be something that our town might want to look at. You know, again, the residency requirement is something that dates back to nineteen seventy. It's a little bit different times today. Um, actually, you know, back then, it was pretty common for the spouse to kind of pack up and follow the manager to wherever he, and I'm using he on purpose, went. Um, it's a little bit different times today. You know, there's, most families have dual careers, um, and um and uh, it's become uh, very difficult to basically find managers that are willing and able to relocate. So um, so I actually had asked them for a copy of the report, which I was including in your packet tonight. Uh, so under the town of Northborough's charter, uh, it requires that the Town Administrator must establish residency uh, within the town within twelve months following his appointment. Um, and uh, so I just think that that's a little bit outdated, um, and the information that was provided in your packet, uh, and again, I didn't do this survey. This was done by the consultant. I just thought it was interesting to include. But out of all the communities, um, about a dozen have a residence requirement still, and several have eliminated their residence requirements over the last, you know, uh, last five or so years because they're out in the market and they're realizing it's a very limiting and constraining factor. Uh, and of the ones, uh, there's a dozen in there. Northborough is one of them. Uh, the report was actually for one of the towns that's in there that is currently looking at removing their residency requirement for their town administrator. So I just wanted to bring it forward to the board, uh, for your consideration. Um, if this is something that you're interested in doing, uh, it would be, uh, the process would be similar to the discussion we had at your last meeting about changing the Board of Selectmen name to Select Board. It'd be through a special act of the legislature. Um, I've already spoken with our legislative delegation, and they're happy to help us with this, and possibly the two at the legislative level could be done, you know, together as two minor changes to the charter to accomplish this. But essentially, um, if it's something the board is interested in doing, it would require an affirmative vote by you tonight to place an article on the April twenty twenty-three town meeting warrant to petition or to get authorization from town meeting to petition the state legislature to uh, through a special act to make that change. So uh, I just wanted to put it on the agenda for you to discuss tonight. If it's something that you're interested, it's it's fairly straightforward. Um, and again, I don't have any skin in the game. I live in town. I've always lived in town, but it was by chance that I happened to live in town before I worked here. Honestly, had I not lived in town and not bought my house when I did, I probably wouldn't have been able to afford to to move here. So and that's what a number of communities are finding. Um, beyond that, the housing market is a little bit crazy at the moment. Prices are all over the place. You know, interest rates are high. It's a, it's a high barrier for someone to to sell their house, move to another community, uh, uproot their family and deal with the spouse who probably has a equal equally significant career. So again, I have no skin in the game here. I just wanted to bring this forward for your consideration. I think when you look at the overall trends and out of all those communities, there's a dozen, and of that dozen, there's a couple of them that are in the process of removing the residence requirement. It's worth having a discussion uh, with the board. Uh, incidentally, Mitch and I were both at the and and Beck as well at the Mass Municipal Association Conference this weekend. And I went to two sessions dealing with the uh, difficult nature of recruitment right now across the board at all levels. And one town, uh, the city of Springfield actually has a residence requirement, and their H R director probably spent a half an hour talking about how it has severely constrained their ability to recruit and retain people. And um, there wasn't anybody on the panel that thought it was this day and age a good, a good idea. But again, um, you know, you've got the information in front of you. You can kind of see the the rationale uh, for why maybe, you know, this requirement from nineteen seventy might be a little bit out of date. Um, but I leave it to the board. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but in terms of process, it would take an affirmative vote for you. It would have to go to town meeting regardless, and then it would have to be approved by the state legislature uh, because it is a charter change. So happy to answer any questions.
John, any questions from the board? Or comments? Scott Rogers?
Yeah, thanks, John. And and the only remaining residence requirement we have is for the Town Administrator. All the other positions are not, don't have that requirement.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks for confirming that.
Kristen.
So, um, when I was doing the firefighter interviews a couple weeks ago, um, they have a within fifteen miles, I think, um.
Yes, that's within their contracts, yeah, for response time.
Yeah, right, for response time. Um, so is that, um, I guess this is a question for John then. Is is that like a response time situation? Is that a possibility for a town administrator? Like in an emergency or something?
Um, is what a possibility.
Like needing a relatively short response time. Like if you don't mind commuting an hour back and forth, fine, but if but if we needed our town administrator quick, would it make sense to do that sort of uh, like a radius like the firefighters have?
Yeah, you you could, but again, there's a difference. You you can't, I, you can't fight a fire remotely, but I technically could could do my job and manage an emergency remotely, uh, if if necessary. I mean, we saw that through the pandemic. But boots on the ground, putting water on a fire is a little bit, a little bit different. But even then, you know, we're seeing towns loosening up uh, those requirements as well, uh, because frankly, uh, uh, folks tend not to come back uh, when they're called back for emergencies even. Um, but yeah, I mean, most towns, you can see in the in the packet, there are some towns that, you know, have a uh, within town or within the radius. I just think that if if you're in the position where you're going to be looking potentially for a new town administrator, you're going to, in my opinion, want the best pool of candidates that you can get, and anything that limits that is just going to limit the quality of of the folks that you're you're going to find. You could have somebody that, you know, lives in town or lives right down the street, but chances are, you know, someone's gonna have a, you know, some kind of a commute to make that work.
Thanks. I would um, just like to add, I do see the practical necessity probably of this. However, I do think it's gonna, um, if the town administrator lives sort of far away, it might make the Apple Fest Dunk Tank a little less fun. However, I can say Chief Liver doesn't live in town. He lives in, I don't know.
Charlton.
A few towns away, yeah, and it was still probably fun to dunk him. So maybe, maybe that's okay.
Yeah. I just want, you know, the key here is I just want the, um, I just want the board to be aware that it it's going to be, it 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 right now, as it's written, is going to be overly restrictive. It's gonna definitely impact your ability to recruit if it comes to that. So again, I don't, you know, this doesn't benefit me. I'm more concerned with the town being able to recruit, retain a, you know, good manager in the future.
Yeah, from my perspective, um, following up on that, Kristen, then Jason, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, having it in the charter is then a hard and fast rule that the board cannot waive.
Right.
Um, if we wanted to in some future situation where we were looking for another administrator, we could make it part of a job description. We could weigh it with weigh the distance of an applicant as part of, you know, in the the search process or the interview process uh, and potentially exclude somebody or downrank somebody that maybe lived ninety minutes away, even if they said they were close, that it gives the board the flexibility to weigh those issues as the board saw fit at that time um, as opposed to something that was um, unalterable, which is what we've got right now. Uh, Jason, you got something?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was just going to express the same sentiment. I think
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to express the same sentiment. I think in a, in a recruitment effort, you want to maximize the number and the quality of the applicants and uh, the distance issue here, I think, as John observed, was something that was in the charter long ago during a different era with different expectations, uh, um, and for today's environment, uh, and the the circumstances that typically uh uh arise with families and working couples and and the like, I think, uh, school systems for that matter. Uh, I think it's a a difficult call to insist that a town manager relocate to the town. Um, uh, and as you say, it it certainly is a consideration that could could be uh assessed uh for particular candidates during a particular recruitment, uh, may or may not have any bearing on what uh candidate ends up being selected, but uh, to embed it in the charter and enforce it as a requirement, I think, is in the current hiring environment too restrictive. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Julianne?
Yeah, so I I definitely agree with what everyone is saying. It's um, it's it's a lot to ask a town administrator to um, to move here, uproot families. I don't know how many of you have had to do that. I had to do that and it was, it was very difficult. But I do have a question. Um, so say the person lives in a town that we're having some kind of situation or maybe even a problem with. What what happens then? Does the town administrator remove him or herself from the discussion? How does, how would that work?
No, I mean, unless they they, first of all, if they're working for the town of Northborough, that's their exclusive employment uh, by charter. They can't have an affiliation or work in another town or have anything uh going on in another town. So that individual works and represents solely the town of Northborough. That's how that would work.
Yes, yes, I understand that, but let's just say there's a piece of land that Westboro thinks is theirs, Northboro thinks is theirs, and the town administrator lives in Westboro. Um, we just assume that that the person will will work on behalf of the town. They don't have to, there's no conflict there?
No, I wouldn't see a conflict there. Just by virtue of living in a town doesn't mean you share the um, you share the perspective of the elected board there. Uh, again, uh, by by contract, your sole uh employer is that this could be the town of Northboro and your job is to represent the town of Northboro. I mean, I can't, I can't see anywhere with that uh would become a conflict, frankly. I'm not aware of that ever really coming up, but.
Yeah, I I I I imagine there are weird edge cases that could even come up with an administrator living in town. Say, say, for example, we wanted to build a school on John's backyard, in John's backyard, which we don't.
Absolutely, for a good price.
That might be a, you know, a potential conflict. We'd figure it out, you know, we we'd figure out how to deal with that, but that's, um, I've never heard of anything like like what you're describing. So I, to me, it it doesn't pose a greater risk than anything that we could have with someone living in the town.
And if there was an issue, it would be, you know, uh, it would be reviewed by Ethics Commission if somehow it came up. But again, um, uh, that would be very, very remote.
Okay, and just um, a couple more things. I do think that we should mention that we received at least one email um, asking us to consider the benefits of having the town administrator live in town. And that's why I think it's really important that we have outlined our reasons um, for considering this i- this um motion when it's made, this po- possibility, because there are many, many facts. And as people have pointed out, we're in a different time now and um, even with social media, it's, there's, there's so many different ways of communicating. So um, that's all I have for my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Julianne. Uh, I'll add, as John mentioned, we were at the Mass Municipal Association Conference this past weekend. Um, I didn't uh attend the sessions that John was referring to. Unfortunately, they had five sessions any given time. Um, but I did have some one-on-one conversations with a number of town administrators and town manager over lunch and dinner and things like that. And uh, because I knew this was on the agenda tonight, I I asked a few people for their thoughts. And as soon as I mentioned that we have a residency requirement, there was immediately an eye roll and say, oh, you've got to fix that. Um, that i- i- the the limited pool of applicants that are exists goes way, way, way down um, with a residency requirement. Um, so I I think this is really important to uh, to get changed as soon as possible for whenever we have to go that route. If there are no other comments or questions, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to include in the warrant for the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, an article proposing authorization of a petition to the legislature for a special act amending the town charter to remove the town administrator residency requirement.
Second.
Motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Christian. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, Jason.
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Article will be on the warrant. John, thank you very much for your uh, your detailed research and.
Yeah, this is my pleasure. I really do think it's in the best interest of the town, so.
Excellent. Next up, we have discussion regarding formation of a town offices feasibility study committee. John?
Sure. So as you know, four West Main Street is rolling back to the town. I'm working with town council right now to send a formal notice uh to the uh current um, uh, controlling party uh for that structure, uh, but just by way of reminding folks at town meeting last year, we did place the article on the uh town meeting warrant uh to authorize the town to uh take that that uh facility back. It's hard to believe that after forty years, you know, that lease agreement is up and uh, and the facility does come back to the town for uh, up to a ten thousand dollar, you know, nominal amount uh to for the town to take control for West Main Street. This is the old uh town hall in the center of town. Um, we did also approve a warrant article to conduct a feasibility study. The point of the feasibility study is to look at our current building uh, to determine whether or not we need to renovate and stay here because this building needs some very significant work. Uh, the idea came up as well that uh with the four West Main Street returning back to the town, that we would look at that as an option for potential relocation of uh town offices to to that location. And as well as uh the potential for uh building new, uh, that did come up uh briefly in discussions regarding the White Cliff site. Um, since then, I think that probably is a further uh down the line um option, given the expense of of that. So um, in order to move forward, we do need to get going, form the committee. Uh, first uh item would be for the committee to uh um, commission a survey and to hire an in- an architectural uh firm to start to assess the programmatic needs of the town hall offices building and then start to weigh the options of, again, renovating where we are, moving to four West Main Street or building new. That was the authorization that was included in the um, in the approval from from uh from town meeting. I just shared one other thing. You know, it's funny as as things start to to move along, we also, as you well know, have a downtown uh visioning process that's going on. And uh, you know, there are folks that have very strong feelings about whether or not we should stay in this building or, you know, relocate potentially to four West Main Street. And uh, I think that discussion has been broadened even a a few degrees further by the fact that you know, the consultants are looking at what would our our re- a new vision for the downtown look like and how this four West Main Street play into that. Is it best used as a uh, is it a municipal, you know, town office building? Or would it be better to uh make that a hub of some other activity in the downtown? So again, we're not making a decision on that, but we do need to get going because uh we are going to take that facility back uh, by May of this of of this year, twenty twenty-three, comes back to the town. And so we need to know what we're doing with it because there will be carrying costs that we'll have to plan for until the town makes the decision to either use it for a municipal purpose or to surplus it and sell it and use the proceeds to uh fund, you know, any some other operation uh for the town. So uh, in order to get going, we need to form a uh feasibility study committee. And so uh, I proposed um, it's a five-member committee, uh, member of the board, uh, the select board, uh, and then four citizens at large. You know, one of the things that we've sort of been seeing lately is uh, um, folks that are serving on various boards and committees, it's sometimes it's getting difficult to get them to serve uh on multiple subboards and committees. So, but the bottom line is, um, you know, a five-member board uh makes sense. And I think I, we, unless you feel otherwise, I'd like it uh to have a member of the board of selectmen and then, you know, four citizens at large and get that process going. The big effort or the big item to take undertake right away, as I said, is hiring an architectural firm who provides the technical expertise to, again, review the programmatic needs of every department and then um, start to overlay those blocks of needed space within the building we have now for West Main Street or what it would look like if you're going to build new. So it's a good, you know, it's a good process to look at all the options and then ultimately come back and make a recommendation to um, ultimately to town meeting as far as how best to proceed. But uh, the building we're in right now, sixty-three West uh Main Street, it's a, an old building, has a lot of needs and we have um, been hesitant to invest too much money in it until we know whether or not we're staying here or potentially relocating. So um, the point of this is to form the committee, review that process and then make a recommendation to the town meeting. So it's really nothing for you to do tonight. I just wanted to update on you on that. We're going to be and to publicly notice the residents that we're going to form this committee. So if anybody is interested, they should send in their uh, their uh interest and um, and then we'll move forward with um uh recommending the specific individuals for that committee.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have any uh question? You've got a question or comment? Go for it.
Um, so who selects the people for the committee?
Oh, well, by charter, it would be appointment uh by the town administrator, subject to approval of the board, just like all building committees are are done.
Okay.
Yep, and um, so, uh, sorry, Julianne, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so um, I understand that the staff is very busy, but in this particular case, I I think that having someone who works in these buildings, um, it in the building is uh, would be a real asset to the committee. If there's and.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt it. I had a little glitch going back and forth. You all, you all said?
It could be, you know, it could be anyone who who works in town hall that that could give us the committee information about needs and.
Yeah. So these would be the voting members uh of the proper committee, and then there would be staff assigned. So uh, Sean Thompson, the facilities manager, will be assigned to the committee uh for a technical expertise. Uh, the assistant town administrator will be assigned uh to, hey, Becca, look up, hey. Um, typically, uh, it's it's either the town administrator or the assistant town administrator uh would also uh serve uh uh staff to the committee for technical expertise. You know, we'll help you, we'll help the committee as we typically do, interview architects, but we do the reference checks, negotiate the contracts, and then be here as a technical reference. And then as needed, you know, if there's assessments that need to be done in terms of the needs of the departments, you know, that's all part of the process. The architect would interview all of the departments, find out what their needs are, would do a a programmatic space analysis of, you know, what's the physical space they need for the number of people that we think we that we have now, we think will need in the reasonable future, what do you need for storage, all of that stuff. But no, there'll be staff, uh, technical staff there to assist the the committee. That make sense?
Yes, th- thanks for clarifying that. Thank you.
Sure. It's one of the things I'm excited about, you know, having Sean Thompson, the facilities manager, is getting him involved at the ground level because ultimately, you know, his position is responsible for this um, will be responsible for whatever building or renovation, you know, comes about. And uh, so from from the operational standpoint or the facility standpoint, you want that from the operational standpoint of the staff and so forth, you'll want input from, you know, my office and then as needed, as we go through from the various offices. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Um, I'll add a little bit to uh, to what John said that um, I think that the appointed members of the public should be um, not town employees. I think it's better and cleaner to have a building committee that's made up of just general residents, but in staff members, including, as I said, Sean and Beck are totally unbelievably critical to this process. So um, John, I appreciate that you've already made some of those decisions. Uh, and um, I've been through a similar process before a number of years ago. And yes, the uh, the architect that we hire will, as part of the process, re- discuss it with certainly all the department heads in town hall. Probably most of the employees would be involved in that process. Uh, question, John, if I remember correctly, we um allocated some funds when creating this committee a few years ago. Um, I don't remember how mu- what the dollar amount was. You don't have to tell me if you don't remember, but do you?
There's a, there's a hundred thousand dollars appropriated for the feasibility study.
And you think that that is still adequate to go forward?
Yeah, I do. You know, it's um feasibility studies are 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 interesting because whenever you do a building project, you know, it starts, um, it's a continuum. There's feasibility, conceptual design, design, you know, programma- uh, um, schematic design, design development, construction document. So it's a continuum. Um, I think the most important piece out of this is to look at the options and have a clear direction to go in. Uh, have some conceptual designs and a cost estimate for what it would take to to get us there. The really, the meat of this is determining whether or not we stay in this building and renovate or or relocate somewhere else. And and again, you know, I know there are folks, folks have strong opinions about it either way. Um, and uh, and that's fine, but again, absent information, you know, do we even know if we'll fit in this building or in that building or what would be? And and you want to be able to weigh also the options um in terms of the cost, you know, one may be significantly more cost effective than the other. Uh, so we don't have any of that information, you know, at this point. But no, I think it's enough to get us through. Um, you know, the more money you spend, you know, the more detailed and the further you'll get. So if you have a preferred option, you know, you can really get into a a more fully developed uh conceptual design, but I don't really think we need to get there. The point is really to to determine the direction we're going to go in and have enough information so that we can um let the town, town meeting and the boards and committees know, this is the direction we're going. This is what it would look like. This is roughly what it would cost. And do we want to do it? Yep. Then we go to town meeting, get an appropriations to 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 do the full design and and ultimately construction. But we do, just so everybody is very clear, we can't do nothing. This building, you know, we we had a couple of things happen. You know, we were in the process of really looking at renovating this building, but then we got into the window where four West Main Street was coming back. So that's a real option that needs to be looked at. And then in in the interim, we purchased, you know, White Cliffs and one of the three main options that was reviewed under that feasibility study was potentially locating, you know, town offices up there. Um, so, you know, a lot of things have been sort of breaking news, so we do want to look at, you know, all the options and have a clear rationale for what's being recommended to the town.
Christian?
Um, so a- anticipating people um maybe being interested, but then saying, so how many meetings and how long would this be? And what's the time commitment? Can we estimate that?
Um, I would say, uh, you're you're probably looking at at least um, at least monthly meetings. It normally what happens in these types of initiatives is you meet more frequently in the beginning because you're meeting to select the architect and and to get things going. And then once the architect is on board, they'll need sometimes a month or so. I mean, uh, Julianne knows this from White Cliffs. You know, they'll say, well, we need to do a, we need to do work and then we'll come back. We'll have information to share with you in three or four weeks or or longer. Uh, so probably a a number of meetings initially, and then I would anticipate probably like a a monthly meeting as we go through the process. And I would say, uh, it should be, you know, less than a year uh timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
But in the beginning, yeah, there's a lot in the beginning.
Okay.
The idea is we're going to have, you know, we take this building back, we're going to have carrying costs, you know, so we want to get going, so we know what we do. If we're not going to use it for municipal purpose, and we're gonna, we decide, say, we're going to stay at sixty-three West Main Street, then we need to decide what are we doing with that building? And if we want to surplus the building, given the intricacy of that particular structure to the downtown vision, you know, we may want to put some strings around how it gets redeveloped or how it gets used, not just surplus it for just the raw money. But again, those are discussions for down, down the bike.
Okay.
Right. I'll also add that as John suggested, we'll have one member of the board of selectmen uh appointed to that committee. If uh any members are interested, please uh send me an email. So we can have that sorted out sooner rather than later. Um, assuming there are no other discussion on that item, we will move on to reports. Let's see, uh Jason, do you have any reports this evening?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do. Uh, I wanted to announce this evening that uh after having served approximately twenty-five years on various committees and boards uh in town. I will not be seeking reelection at the conclusion of my term this year. I've been. Serving on this board for three terms, nine years prior to that, whereas uh ten years on the financial planning committee. Three years prior to that on the elderly and disabled taxation fund committee and a couple of years on a school K to eight. Feasibility study committee um with a. Uh Lincoln Street School Building Committee Service uh sprinkled in on top of that uh somewhere along the way. So. Uh after that period of time, uh. Uh signing up for another three-year term is not something that I see fitting into my upcoming schedule, considering. Uh other uh events going on in my life uh with my family and uh. So for that, I'd just like to say that uh it's been my pleasure to serve with the many people I've worked with uh. Both on uh the boards that I've served on and the uh. Administrative personnel and staff in town have always been very hardworking, very uh. Very capable at everything that uh we've encountered, uh not to mention, you know. Things like great recessions in pandemics. So uh very pleased uh uh. With the capable people I've uh I've been able to work with and uh I thank all the. Residents of the town and the voters in town who've supported me over the years. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Jason, thank you very much. All right, um, we will have many more opportunities to uh to comment on your announcement later. Um, let's see, uh Christian, do you have any reports?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um. I, so as I mentioned, I had the pleasure of being part of the panel that interviewed candidates for new firefighters in Northborough and. Just wanted to say thanks to the chief and the guys for having me and Becca for putting up with me. Um, it was really interesting. Seventy percent of their calls, I learned these things, right? Seventy percent of their calls are medical emergencies. And these days with people having better smoke alarm, structure fires are much more rare than they used to be. Um, and the second day that I was there, the alarms were coming in like crazy. So it was funny because the first day. It wasn't that busy. And I was thinking, I wonder what it's like in here when it gets busy. And the second day I found out. So that was really kind of interesting, exciting. Um, today was the first snow day for those of you who don't have kids in the public schools. So that was pretty exciting for all the seniors. At Algonquin, who don't have to make it up. Um, and we got an email from uh Suzie of the Community Affairs Committee. That um they are gonna be doing kindness week again, coming up February twenty-seven through March third. So that'll be right after February vacation is over, school vacation. So just FYI on that, probably more more details coming up. I don't have a quote or a poem, I'm really sorry. Um, but. I can't, I, you know, I kind of dropped the ball on that one. And then Jason had the most interesting report tonight anyway, so. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Scott, do you have any reports this evening?
Uh, just that uh we're gearing up for then uh appropriations and financial planning as as we get into budgeting uh season. So I'll be uh participating in in those meetings coming up. Um, and then I just want to take opportunity to uh, you know, we'll have another opportunity to do this, but I really wouldn't want to recognize Jason for his his years of service. Um, yeah, he's he's been an inspiration uh to me. Uh, and and in some ways I followed in his footsteps. Uh, I would also like to announce tonight that I will not be running for reelection either. Uh, but I appreciate the opportunity that the voters of uh Northborough gave me uh in this role. And I look forward to continuing to serving the community in other capacities. That ends my report.
Boy, lots of surprises this evening. Um, thank you very much. And thank you, Scott. Uh, Julianne, do you have any reports?
Yeah, yes, um. Wow, um, well. My initial reaction is to say thank you to both you, Scott and Jason for all of your hard work. This is um. This is a very gratifying position, but I understand that, you know, other things take take precedence. So um. Well, okay, so. First thing I have to talk about is a rather important announcement, which is that. This Thursday, as part of master plan implementation, we will have a community meeting about the downtown revitalization plan with the consultants. The the meeting is at six thirty at the high school in the library. Um. And there there might be a little confusion because initially we had requested that it be a hybrid meeting, but that is not possible. It will be an in-person meeting, so I'm sorry to people who may not be able to get there, but um. But we just didn't have the staff apparently to to coordinate a hybrid meeting. So hopefully people can get there. Um, and I am always willing to take comments if people want. Want to email me on the town email um to hear if you have any thoughts or ideas. So secondly, um. I'd like to take our new application. For volunteers to another level. Um, Scott, you're always good at listing the number of vacancies, but. I I would like to ask that on our. Homepage of the Northborough uh. Um homepage, that there be a way of immediately just clicking on to volunteer positions and. Um. You know, when when Kristen and I did this, we asked people it. It was an unscientific survey, but what we really discovered is that people. Found out about committees from friends or social media, very rarely through the website. And I think, you know, a lot of people do use the website to pay their bills. And if they saw an easy little thing to click on. Um, when they first log in, it's um, it would be. It would, I think it would be worth a try. And if it's not too difficult, uh um. And I don't know what you all think about it, if you want to put it on an agenda or if you want me to call David Kane, but um. It's something that that I would like to see happen. Um, also. Soon, um, we will have to discuss the four and a quarter million dollars that we have left over from ARPA. And I believe I've asked for this before, that it would be beneficial that we have a tour of our municipal buildings. Just as you all had a tour of the of the school buildings before we start allocating that money. Um, and I understand that there's going to be an independent person coming in to or an independent. Firm coming in to to do a a real assessment of the buildings, but there's nothing like seeing it. So. If that could be arranged, I'd greatly appreciate it. And. Um. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Um, I've got a couple of things. First, I want to wish those who celebrate a happy lunar new year, the year of the rabbit. Uh, and uh second through fifth or sixth or seventh, I want to summarize a few things that. Um, that I ran across at the Mass Municipal Association uh conference. This past weekend, um I went to a great session on municipal electrical aggregation, something we've talked about a little bit before, and we've certainly heard from. Uh, a number of constituents about. Um, we should start on this right away. Um, in in talking with John, it does look like. We passed this at town meeting a number of years ago, but never moved forward. Whatever the reasons were, don't matter, but we should, we should start on that really, really soon. Um. Some of the things I learned about it, um Marlboro, as as was pointed out in an email to me as well as confirmed, because the city council president was one of the presenters. Marlboro is paying nine point three cents per kilowatt hour right now, while we were paying thirty-one cents per kilowatt hour. Those obviously go back and forth a lot, but um. All the presenters say that, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, they save money, sometimes substantial money. Um, I learned that you can. Put a very, very tiny surcharge onto um what is being charged to fund municipal energy savings issue. Issues such as the town administrator of Auburn was one of the presenters and through the money that they get from this program. They hired an energy manager and that energy manager helps the town save even more money. Um, on a lot of things. Um, I went to a great presentation called Using Public Communication to Build Community and Trust, uh which provided all sorts of interesting ideas I think we'll talk about later. Um, I went to a municipal law update, um very interesting Supreme Court case on flags. Um, definitely movement towards uh permanent remote meetings in the state legislature. Uh, and up and it was announced that very recently there was an update to the uh state's public records law guide. The uh the governor spoke at the opening of uh of the meeting as he or she almost always does. Uh, because there's a new governor, we don't have any budget details, which are usually released right at that meeting. Um, promised by March first, I would say she said all the right words, uh didn't have the numbers yet, uh and promised the numbers sometime prior to March first. Um, and I will also uh recognize and thank uh our own John Kader, who gave an excellent presentation. And led a discussion in front of the whole uh MMA, which was the only thing that the MMA organization voted on as a whole. During the whole weekend and uh it was a unanimous vote regarding. Initiatives and recommendations for the legislature for the uh the coming budget season. Um, and that ends my report. Um, next up, we have execution of cemetery deeds. Would someone like to make a motion or say anything to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote uh to execute cemetery deeds one one six three and one one six four.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Kristen. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh, Jason.
Aye.
Julianne.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Kristen.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. Does anyone have anything to come before the board that we haven't already talked about this evening?
Okay.
Oh, I've got a couple of hands. Julianne, you got yours first.
So, um. Oh, the electric bills are a big concern in town. And if we could. Put that uh discussion of the community aggregation on a. Very soon um agenda. I think that 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 would be very important.
Yes, you know, I I agree. We've got to move forward with that. Um. The one of the things that I I learned a a lot of details about the process at um. At this session that I attended at the conference, and unfortunately it takes a long time. So if we put it on our next meeting, no one's gonna be saving money this year, or maybe even not next year, uh unfortunately. That it takes a few months to go through the what we need to do first. By generating the plan and hiring a consultant and everything like that. Then we send it off to the Department of Public Utilities. Uh, one of the presenters at this conference was the general counsel for DPU. And he was saying that turnaround time used to be three to six months, now it's close to twenty-four months. And um he's trying to expedite that process. There were some. Representatives of communities in the room that had been waiting a couple of years um who are anxious to uh to get these new contracts in place. They're they're working on it. Um, but the the best we can do is start right away. So I I hope we can uh we can do that. So I'll I'll discuss with John um. A timeline for getting that onto an upcoming agenda and and making that happen. Kristen.
Um. I just wanted to piggyback on Julianne's initial. Report comment about the homepage. So Scott and I actually have already been plotting and scheming to make that happen, to make the vacancies on the. On the homepage. He and I have been emailing back and forth about that. And I think we're all so careful to be. To to make sure we're not like a quorum, having a discussion about anything. So we don't include anybody else in the emails. I always only email one of you at a time about. Anything, pretty much. Um, so, but Scott and I were um. Emailing and we did go back and forth a little bit with David Kane and. Um, because Scott had been the one to find the vacancy so quickly at our last meeting, so I emailed him and asked him and. And it is like a several step process. And even though there is something on the homepage that Scott and I had both missed. That is a little bit easier. It's still, I think, could be easier. So anyway, we were talking about it and it's great to know that. Um, Julianne thought of it too, and and we're all sort of thinking the same thing. So hopefully, uh, we can make it even a little bit easier.
That's great. Thank you for already making making progress on that.
Sure.
Okay, any other business before the board? Our last item, as always, is public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to offer a comment before we close for the evening? I see no hands up going once. Going twice. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Scott.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Julianne.
Aye.
Kristen.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. We are adjourned at eight oh six PM. Thank you very much.